Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Creek County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Wednesday, August the 20th, 2025, and it's nine o'clock AM. So to begin with, Mike Irvin, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
To the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't have a pastor this morning, so we will go on and go to public comment. Anybody wish to speak? Anybody online wish to speak? It be noted that Commissioner Crawford is online today. He's not here in person. Hey, nobody wants to talk, so go to the consent agenda.
So they must not have any complaints.
No.
That's a good, that's a good sign this morning.
I like happiness.
Yes. Okay, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
My second motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Seth.
Oh.
I was gonna second, but that's okay.
Okay, perfect. No, but you have no comments.
No.
Perfect. Okay.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Hermike, aye.
Barney, aye.
Crawford, aye.
Thank you. Discussion, Holiday Partnership Request to Use of the Kerry Foster Hall. Carol and Steve? And Gwen?
Yep. So I am here representing the Creek County Foundation. I was appointed as the Executive Director back in June, so I am very excited to dive into this work and be here today to kind of just talk a little bit about what the Holiday Partnership has done for the community, the impact, the need, and why we're here to request the use of Kerry Foster Hall. So we took over the program in 2020. The program had sat in front of, the county held that program for a lot of years, and then due to some shift in needs and capacity, it moved over to the foundation in 2020. We're continuing to see a really big need in our community for this program. It's been a really important piece of the holiday season for many, many families. Last year, 564 children received gifts through this program, over 200 seniors and 42 adults with disabilities. So it's really making an impact. And then as far as food, we saw almost 1,200 individuals receive assistance through the food program, which really made a difference. It kind of offset some of the things that we see in the holidays around, you know, schools being closed and students not being there, receiving that food. You know, just different moving parts through the holidays where people are really strapped. It seems to be a really good program that really supports our community. So we are just here to request the use of Kerry Foster Hall. We would need the use of it for a couple of weeks in December to set everything up, get the gifts organized and ready to go, and that is our request to you today.
What better time to ask than in the spirit that everyone's happy?
Yeah, exactly.
There's no complaints today, huh, Steve? So that works out very good. Do you guys have anything to add? You summed that up very well. Would you identify yourself for the people on Zoom? Okay, I know, I know who you are, but yes, for them. Perfect, perfect. Last year, I was able to participate in Holiday Partnership, and I hope you will accept my help again this year. I hope it didn't flub up too bad. But it is a very heartwarming and very, it's a really good way to spend Christmas. And it, and you're right, there is a great need out there, and obviously I work with food insecurity, and I realize that, and it's a very, it's, it just shows how generous Creek County is. And it's even, we recently had that girl who had the accident, and Creek County has just embraced, we're just so generous, and I'm so proud to be a member of Creek County. And this is just another thing that I'm super proud of. I'm very happy to make a motion to approve Kerry Foster Hall for the dates, I want to say December 9th.
December 8th through the 19th.
Oh, I almost cut you off a day. Okay, December 8th through the 19th.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
No discussion. Merry Christmas. There you go.
All in favor, say aye.
Hermike, aye.
Barney, aye.
Crawford, aye.
And the county's very pleased to do it. We're excited to do it. We budget for this every year, and thank you for coming in.
We appreciate the.
Yes.
You gotta say who you are, Steve.
Steve Waring, I'm the Chair of the Creek County Foundation. I just want to also thank the folks at the fairgrounds. They're just such great partners to work with and really help for us to be able to collaborate and put these types of events on. So thank them also for all their hard work that they do for allowing us to use those facilities.
That's very nice of you to say. They'll be very happy to hear that.
Last weekend, they had a volunteers barbecue, and a lot of people showed up. It takes a lot of people to run the fairgrounds, and they're all volunteers, in addition to the great work KC does. Next line. Signature request, IGA, you can see, Aaron.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Aaron Boyce, Creek County Sheriff's Office. Here to request a signature on an intergovernmental agreement between Department of Corrections and Creek County. This is for the funding for community corrections for the 2527 budget. We're happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I don't have any questions.
I don't even know if I know what to ask, so I trust you, Aaron, and I know that these funds are very much needed. So Seth, do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay, then all make a motion for the Commissioners to sign IGA number 6986 for the 2527 budget cycle, which is an IGA between Oregon DOC and Creek County for Community Correction Services. That was a long.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the IGA. Any more discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Hermike, aye.
Barney, aye.
Crawford, aye.
So moved. Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Mr. Van De Acter.
Morning Commissioners. For you again today is a request from Republic for a rate increase for fiscal year 26. As you might recall, Republic came on July 2nd of this year to make their original rate increase request. There was some indication of some flexibility at that time in terms of what that rate increase should be. Staff has since looked into a couple of items that were raised at that July 2nd meeting and has had further correspondence with Republic regarding a potential rate increase. Some of the concerns that were raised on July 2nd were potential, what I'm calling, rate fatigue, the potential, but otherwise the potential for multiple rate increases over a single fiscal year. So what, what staff is recommending at this time is a single rate increase of two and a half percent effective October 1st, 2025. This, this ensures that the rates for Republic go up enough to cover the increased tipping fees, or at least hopefully kind of cover some of the increased tipping fees that were implemented on July 1st of this year at the landfill. And Republic has acknowledged that even with this request, or with this recommendation of two and a half percent, be much lower than what they originally requested. They understand that there will not be additional rate increases over this fiscal year. Another option that is outlined, or not, not an alternative, but in addition to the two and a half percent increase, one potential is to credit back to Republic Services some of their costs associated with those increased tipping fees at the landfill starting July 1st. As I noted a second ago, the new rate increase, if approved, would be effective on October 1st of this year. So if the board wanted to ensure that Republic's increased costs due to the tipping fees are covered, there is an option to provide a credit to Republic that covers that increase, those increased tipping fees for the months of July, August, and September. I outline in the memo, that's part of the agenda packet this morning. I outlined some of the pluses and minuses of doing that. One of the big minuses is the potential impact to the landfill's budget. Revenue forecasts for this fiscal year were based on those increased tipping fees, and there would be a negative impact to their revenue. We estimate that to be about $50,000 for the months of July, August, and September.
Fifty each or fifty total?
Total. But as we discussed earlier this summer, when Republic came to make their original rate increase request, the board, board indicated some desire to have some skin in the game in terms of those increased fees. Those are fees that Republic can't control. Those are our fees that we're implementing. So there's some equity component to ensuring that Republic is recouped. If the board is inclined to apply that credit for those three months, to make it kind of feasible and practical on the county's end to implement that credit, it'd be important to just base it on monthly tonnage reports and not individual tickets so that we can easily account for that and determine what those credit amounts should be. With all that said, as I've outlined in the memo, staff's recommendation is that the board approve the two and a half percent rate increase. This is, this, this total amount, or the total rate increase is comparable to CPI for the prior year. I think it reflects a fair increase for Republic without significantly increasing the fees for the ratepayers here in Creek County. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I think there's, there's two kind of questions before the board this morning. One, should you approve the two and a half percent rate increase? And then also, the board should consider whether or not it wants to apply that credit I discussed for the months of July, August, and September. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. This is a public hearing, so we'll need to open it up for public comment. I know Republic's here. They may want to make some comments as well.
Yeah, I'd just like to put my two cents in about the reducing the amount between July and September. I just think it's the right thing to do since, like Will talked about, they have no control over that amount. And I know it hits our budget, you know, a little bit on the front end, but I think there's opportunity with the smaller increase to the citizens and some different things like that that evens it out.
Yes, my question would be, we have our Director of Landfill here. Oh, we have our Director of the Landfill here. Jackie, would you come up? Because I just want to know, how tight does that make it for you? That's, you run a very tight ship up there, and how, how hard would that be if we were to credit that?
How hard would that?
Or, I mean, I know it's money, but you know what I'm asking, basically. Are you okay with that?
Obviously, I account for every dollar, and I can use every dollar that comes in. And like well stated, my budget was based on that projected revenue, but I understand the position of the county and trying to make things right with Republic Services. Normally, the amount wouldn't be this large, but there was a special project that was involved in the month of July. But as far as this goes, we can make it happen.
Okay, thank you, Jackie.
Okay, we'll open it up, hearing, public hearing.
Courtney, pass for Republic Services. I don't have any prepared comments, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No, I don't have any questions, Courtney.
I have no questions either. I, I get.
Seth, do you have any questions, Courtney?
Nope.
Is there anyone here opposed to? Or in favor of, or neutral that would like to speak? Here or online? If you're online and you'd like to speak, please type in the chat box. Okay, nobody, yes.
Adam McCulkey, 3992 Northwest Hancic. Just a question is, so wherever the rate increase goes, that's going to go back to the customers as far as for Republic, since I am a Republic customer? So our rates are going to get raised two and a half percent? Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Going back to July or the, basically a refund or something like that, or a credit, how is that, is that going to affect the customers? Bills, monthly bills or bi-monthly now?
It will not impact your, your monthly bill. To the extent ratepayers are impacted, it'll be indirectly, as that'll come, that will be revenue that the landfill does not generate. So it's actually out of the general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just a question. Thank you.
So no one else wants to speak? I guess I will close the hearing. The hearing's closed. So I would like to say I, I'm in favor of the two and a half percent and of crediting back. I felt from the beginning that if we're going to limit their amount of increase, then we need to step up and not charge them more and burden that more. I think that we're in the process of, in some communications with them and working on things, and I think this is a good faith effort to move forward and make things better.
I have, I have no comments.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to you, would you like this in two motions? One to the CPI and another motion for the credit?
I think that might be ideal.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Seth, I'm looking at you for this motion.
I'd make a motion to increase the Republic rate increase by the CPI of 2.5%.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to increase Republic's fee of CPI at 2.5%. Any further discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Hermike.
Crawford, aye.
Barney, aye. So moved. The next motion.
I'm looking for Seth again.
Would.
Would you like to make that motion, Will?
I, I'd like to just, there's some specifics I want to make sure we include in it. So if it's okay, if you guys want to rephrase it, I'll understand, but if you don't mind me taking a crack, I think the motion.
Go for it.
So I think the motion should note that the county intends to credit back to Republic the difference between the landfill fees for fiscal year 25 and fiscal year 26 with the intent that that difference be covered. This is not a very good motion, I apologize. Trying to think on my feet. But the intent is that the difference between last year's fees and this year's fees be credited back the months of July, August, and September of 2025, and that that credit should be based on the monthly tonnage reports that the landfill prepares or receives.
We have Jackie back.
I know the, I just, sorry, this popped into my head. The credit back was going to be the difference in tonnage price from 69 a ton to 62 a ton. That project in July did include the Deschutes County Bio Solids, which was charged at 79 a ton. That's, we discussed, that's the out-of-county rate. Am I excluding that and keeping that at the 79 for the?
I would exclude that, yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So, sorry. I just, I think we need some specificity, just to be clear in terms of what is being credited. Like, so I'm, I'm trying to think through this, so do you, does the board feel like it understands? So the motion should note that the credit is for the months of July, August, and September, that the out-of-county waste that was brought in from Deschutes County should be excluded from that credit.
So, so the in-county refuse that was brought in would be included in it, just would be the subject.
And then, do you want to put something in there about it being on a quarterly, or on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis? So she doesn't have to do every single ticket?
Yeah, you want to do, like Jackie indicated, monthly, monthly tonnage, monthly tonnage. I was trying to think of that word, and I kept thinking of refuge, and I don't know why, but anyway, tonnage, yes.
I can't hear Will.
He's not saying anything. He's thinking Seth, so we're going to come up with a motion here pretty soon.
Do we bill monthly now? Jackie? Okay, so none of that's changing.
He's writing Seth, so you have to be patient.
Well, he was writing, his lips were moving.
My kids make fun of me for that all the time.
We shouldn't have, we shouldn't have interrupted you.
I think you're doing a wonderful job. If you weren't doing it, we would have to.
Okay, this still isn't pretty, but the motion could be to credit Republic the difference for increased fees beginning July 1st specifically, crediting back from $69 a ton to $62 a ton for the months of July, August, and September. This credit will be applied to in-house garbage refuse, tonnage, and exclude out-of-county refuse, refuse that was brought in during that time period of July, August, and September. And the credit will be based on monthly tonnage reports.
So moved.
I second that motion. Very good motion, Will.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Crawford, aye.
Hermike, aye.
Barney, aye. So moved. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
You like a manager's report now, after all that?
Got to switch gears quickly. Only thing I wanted to note this morning, just a reminder to the public and, and folks online, there is that Juniper Canyon Community Meeting this evening at Kerry Foster, Kerry Foster Hall. So encourage folks to attend who are interested in, in that conversation about Juniper Canyon access and other related items.
Perfect.
Commissioner?
I have nothing to report.
Hey, Seth?
Uh, yeah, I've just excited to talk about the county college that we rolled out a couple of days ago. I think it starts on September 11th and goes to February, and there'll be a different class every month. And just a really good, to help people have a better understanding of where their tax dollars are spent and what we do as a county on a daily, day-to-day basis, and how hard and how hard our employees work, and how many great employees we have here to kind of learn what we're doing on an everyday basis. So if you're here and you're interested, please sign up. There's 25 people total the first year, first come, first served. And if, if you're not interested, please share with your friends and colleagues to get as many people in there as possible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any public comment?
Mike Irvin, Plana Highway. On the college thing that Seth was just talking about, who is presenting?
Um, so it would be the different department heads.
Oh, okay. So it's employees of the county from the different departments?
Yes, yes. And what we've tried to work out is some, you know, there's a lot of classroom, but we're also trying to find ways to get people to walk around the fairgrounds, go up to the road department, see some of the equipment, talk to the weed master, see what he uses on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, Sarah's put that on the web, on our webpage too, and so it outlines everything pretty well with the schedule and dates and things. Okay, thank you. Any more comments?
I'm Julie Thompson on Green Valley Road, and I have some comments and some questions both, I guess. So the letter that was mailed out to additional residents in the county. One, I know you probably won't give me the addresses of who all got it, but how many people actually got that letter? And has there been any response to that letter?
I, I see that John Isler and Katie Plummer are both online. I don't know if either of them might be able to answer that question.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't remember the number. I could look it up, Julie, and get back to you, but it was sent out to, I believe, a one-mile radius, kind of around the aggregate site, to all the residents. And so I, the responses wouldn't have come to me, so I don't know how many responded to the letter.
Would the responses have went to DEQ then?
No, I think OHA.
Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, this is Katie. I believe there were ninety households on the mailing list.
My other comment on this letter is that I thought that the letter was being written by not just DEQ, but by the county also. And when this letter came out, I was a little irritated because we, this letter is dated February twelfth, twenty twenty-five. We had already all gotten this letter. This was the exact same letter that the sixty of us that are aware of the problem already received. And so it was basically sent again, the exact same letter. So, we were told for months that it was in process, just trying to find the right wording, trying to get this letter done. And it comes out and it's the exact copy of what we already received in February and only from DEQ. Nothing on there from the county. Do you know what that is?
Julie, this was in response to Ashley's request um that the prior letter, the letter you're referencing, didn't go out to enough parties. Um, she wanted to make sure that everybody around the neighborhood got that letter, and so that was the request, that's what we responded to. I think you're talking about DEQ's letter from the second round of testing, which we still haven't, that hasn't been sent out yet.
No, I'm not talking about that. I am talking about the letter that was sent out per Ashley's request, and we had to ask and ask when the letter was going out. Um, I have email correspondence from OHA and DEQ and everybody saying that they didn't even know about the letter, and then we were told by you, John, that we're still working on the wording, trying to figure out the right wording and getting the mailing list done, and so I was shocked to see that it was a carbon copy of what was already written.
Julie, I think you might have misheard that the letter was not, that wasn't coming from the county. We weren't gonna um write those words. If I said we, I guess that was in reference to DEQ.
Gotcha, okay. Good to know. Um, secondly, I know you guys have all received, maybe not John, but all the commissioners have received the sampling plan that has been written basically by Knife River, which is amazing to me that we let Knife River write the sampling plan. I know DEQ and Dogami are involved in it. Um, but to me, if the person who's accused of being the problem, maybe not guilty, but the problem, um why are they getting to write the plan? A little fishy to me, and I'm hoping that maybe the commissioners can help with this a little bit and get involved. I realize at this point, the plan is probably not going to change. It's finally taken place. I mean, it's gonna be a entire year after it was requested by the governor that it actually hopefully starts happening by the end of September. Um, but it seems to me like the county would have a little bit of concern also because according to the sampling plan, the Knife River is doing their own sampling again, basically. Um, this is, that, this should affect the entire county. This should affect what the county gives permits for in the future as far as mining. And I would hope that they are concerned about this plan as much as us residents are too. Any comments on that?
I think those are very good comments, Julie.
Thank you.
I, I think that we're in a hands-tied situation, unfortunately, because we have the state over us. I do want you to know, I went to the Pendleton Conference a couple weeks ago, and I met the gal that is the OHA Problem Solver. And she assured me, and I said, well, why don't we find a solution? Let's quit worrying about who's to, what, what's our solution? And I have called her, and I will call her again, because she's supposed to be getting back to me, because I do believe that is part of our dimension, is we need to move towards solutions, and I've kind of been looking different things up. And my question to you is, when you guys did your filtering system, and I know you put one in, did you do the green sand filter? Are you aware of the green sand filter?
I don't know if it is green sand um or not. I know we have two big tanks full of what they call media. One filters out arsenic, one filters out manganese, there's another filter that follows those two and.
Then that is probably the green sand, yeah, because it does do your, I think it does manganese, radium, arsenic, and there's one other, I can't remember.
There's a whole list of.
Yeah, yeah.
Each take does and.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, that was a question, because like I say, I'm kind of trying to look for solutions more than.
Well, it does work, and I'm glad there is a solution, but I also think that we should prevent it from happening again.
Well, I, I do agree, but you're to a point where we need to look at solutions also.
Right. It was very concerning to me, too, that in the plan, it does state that in the future, when they start mining the veneer site, that the, they list the wells that will be used as monitoring wells, which those wells are, you know, again, on the Woodward side or the veneer side, so to me, that means they're not, it's postponed. It's not happening. They still think they're going forward with that, and if they think that, it probably will happen. Um, because the county's not gonna pull any CUPs, they're not gonna not give the CUPs. The only thing stopping them is the testing that they get done, and if the sampling plan is written and performed like this says it is, with not even a third party on-site, according to this plan, then it's gonna happen. So I hope that maybe there can be some different conditions in the CUP or something. And maybe Dogami, which not to hold my breath on any of this, but would crack down a little better on the requirements and monitoring of it, because it does affect everybody around there.
Have, have you shared those concerns with your state representative and state senator?
Um, well, Seth, I know you gave me the some, a phone number and for uh Mike McLean, and I called him and he said, I'm really busy, I'll have somebody get ahold of you. I have tried four different times to have a Zoom meeting with him, and they've all been canceled because he's gotten busy, so honestly, it's not gonna happen, is my point, is my thought, like, four different, you know, what's, why do I keep beating my head against the wall? Um, so.
I mean, the only reason I ask is those are the people that are over those agencies, and I, and I, I know this is kind of the mantra I give every time you come.
Right.
And, and I'm happy to advocate, and I think we've done a really good job of advocating, getting us to this point. But at some point, they need to start getting involved and question the all these things you're bringing up to these agencies, because those agencies are, they are the ones that are indirectly and somewhat directly in charge of those agencies. And so, those are the people that can really get changed. I mean, we can complain, and again, I think we've done a very, very amazing job of, from our level, forcing state agencies to hear you and listen and move forward. But, but at some point, we need that next level to, to step up.
And, and I do want to add that at Pendleton, I talked to Representative Vic uh Breeze Iverson, and I said that you, you people did not feel that you had been heard, and that there was a, a super need for her to get in contact with you. That's all like Seth and I can do, but I mean, that, that was said verbally, looking her in the eye, so I do want you to know that we're advocating for you.
Right. I appreciate that. Um, but I, you know, Mike, I have sent all of my concerns to of course, DEQ, Dogami.
Yes.
EPA. Um, I'm away, they're, they've all replied and said they're gonna get back to me.
I, so I talked to someone that's a member of your community, I won't specifically call him out here, but I was told that the federal, that they had, they had went into the site, is that true?
I don't know that they've been on-site. I, I have heard that well, and I have talked to a lady at EPA, and she said she's very interested in starting an investigation into this. But it's not, as far as I know, not taking place yet. Um my last email, well, one of my last emails to EPA, Dogami, and DEQ was, are you going to be testing the creek that is a hundred and thirty yards from the settling ponds? No, we're not. But now, recent, within that, since that email went out, they said somebody got a phone call from a person, I won't say who, but um, and they realized that that creek does flow into US waterways. Because this whole time, they've been told it's a ditch or a slough, like it says in this report. It is not, it is a year-round creek that flows into the Crooked River.
And, and what has been your response from Senator Merkley's office? Cause I know he's on your, you know, he's on your side and he's been fighting, and I can reach out again to Nicole, but what is, what is their comment back been?
They're forwarding the information to EPA, they're sending it to, you know, to, to Margaret at EPA, or the problem with EPA right now is, I think, part, not, not right now, maybe, but part of the issue is, is that the person who does this job normally is retired, and so there's a gal there for thirty days, and then she goes out, and then somebody else goes in for thirty days, and then they just keep rotating, but she says she'll stay involved. I don't know how that's gonna work, but it's a little, you know, when they're changing people every thirty days, it loses its momentum real quick.
I'm sorry about the leadership, that is always a difficult thing to
Yeah.
to encounter.
Yeah.
And two weeks ago, Julie, individually, each commissioner and the county manager met with Scott Acock. Scott is with the governor's office and regional solutions. We all expressed our concerns with how the state is handling this. There needs to be an adult in the state that manages their different departments. And, and believe me, they heard from all of us for quite a little while.
Thank you.
So we're, we're, we're trying to bring him around, but it's just like trying to drag a kid through the door that didn't want to go through the door.
And Brian's right, he had a whole page of notes coming out of, well, he had a page, but he had quite a few subjects on, on, I think, so he's right, we did, you know, on many levels, but that you were the first one, so. We are advocating for you. It's like we're hopeless, or not hopeless, helpless in a lot of the situation.
Well, thank you, I just wanted to.
No, it's very good to see you guys again.
Thank you for coming in.
I knew you didn't come not to come up and say something.
Glad to say my name again.
Sure, there, there's people on camera, and we need to make sure.
Three nine nine two Northwest to Hansick. Uh, I didn't come here to really talk about the water, but I do have a question by what Julie just said. Is moving over into the veneer property, I know on part of the uh CUP that was getting uh completed or done, or it's probably not completed, because there is a water guarantee in there that has not been completed that I know of, so when them moving forward, that's probably gonna have to get addressed to see what it is, so it's not gonna be as easy for them to move, I hope, until that gets done, and and during our discussions with the planning commission, when you were on there, and then the commissioners here, they talked about, you know, uh Knife River and the county coming up with the plan, but I think also maybe the citizens or the people that are affected might be involved in some of this planning on that to see if everything is gonna be good, not that you guys won't do a good job on it, but you might miss something that's really important to the people that are getting affected on that, so I just wanted to make a comment on that. The reason I uh, I came up to talk today, uh I have a question for the county, and it has nothing to do with the water, but there's a lot of issues out there, you see nationwide right now with uh title, uh people stealing titles, selling homes, a lot of that's going on, it's a small percentage nationwide, but when it happens to you, it's bad. So I looked into it, called the county uh clerk to see if there's a, if they're working on something, cause there's something out there that the counties are doing now, like a list of, of titles and all that. And then people get notified if something's happening to that title, or somebody's looking into it, whatever. I was just kind of curious what Crook County is doing, cause talking to the assistant at, at the clerk's office, they said they, there is something they're looking into, but there's nothing yet on that, but I see everybody kind of agreeing, and I think they probably heard about it. So I kind of, is there an update or anything on that? Uh, cause it is a big concern.
Cheryl came and did a presentation on that, and we are very fortunate in our county clerk, she's very, very what do I, she's very efficient, so I know that she's doing, if you, if you met with the assistant and you would like to meet with Cheryl, I can accommodate that, and we can meet, and you can talk about, but that is very much on her radar. I know that, and I know she did a presentation here. That would be devastating. I, that's a terrible thing that these scammers are doing.
And there's a lot of illegal stuff going on all over the place, so.
Well, it's just like they were saying at the fairgrounds, I don't know if you saw the bull riding event, but I was sitting there, and Casey, our manager, came up and said, you know, there's a scam on the internet, they're selling tickets for this bull riding tonight for twenty-five dollars. It was free event and everything. How sad is that, that that's even happening on, on a basis on just an old county fair of for Crook County? It's kind of, it makes you really distrustful of everything.
If they can get down to this level down here.
Yeah, and that's exactly my point, you know, for something that's simple, yeah.
Just a couple other quick comments, um you know, we, we talk about this development, we talk about Knife River, we talk about uh biomass, I mean, we've, we've discussed a lot of this stuff, the development that's happening in, in the county and what the city's doing and all that. And then I don't think people really believe that it doesn't, that it, it doesn't affect like property values or anything like that, so I'm gonna share what I did. We actually, we're gonna downsize, we put our house up on the market, we took it off yesterday. We had almost an offer right at the beginning, and it was coming until the people knew, they said they couldn't live across the street from Knife River. So, so personally, myself, we've had other people look at our property, they'll look at our property, drive down the street, I've seen them down there looking, and then all of a sudden, you don't hear from us, so the first people actually said it in writing, they said they wouldn't do that. So anything we decide here, as far as the planning commission, what the city decides, whatever, it's gonna affect somebody. It may not affect twenty thousand people, but it's gonna affect a few people, just like it affected the water in, in the area that we're at, you know, with all the neighbors having problems there, they can't sell their house. Um, we don't have issues with our water yet, and we're lucky for that. But it's still an issue for us to even actually sell the place. And I don't know how much worse it would get when, when the, the city is trying to push a uh biomass plant just down the street, two miles down there, you see signs popping up, and uh, and then so we rezone, we do that, and I was at the uh city-level meeting talking with Josh, and what's happening is they're trying to move their urban growth boundary up toward the dump, you know, up in that whole area, up in the juniper trees, but what the issues they're running into is the solar plants. How many solar plants and how many acres they take up, that could actually be property that could be industrial or commercial, they stick a bunch of mirrors on it and take three hundred and twenty acres or five hundred acres or whatever, and they're having a hard time trying to move it there, so, you know, you can see it moving into the farmland and moving into the rural neighborhoods because of what's happening on there, and I know the county has, has uh, you know, okayed uh solar plants at uh Wible Corner, and, and uh, and now there's one up on, on top of the hill, they'll have to clear in all the land and, and all that. So I think, it's just a comment from Adam, is like, yes, we have, we need development, but when do we stop, and how much do we actually need before it really gets out of hand? And Crook County seems to be the one right now in the city that actually everybody's going to, because they've already ruined Bend and Redmond. Well, let's just come over here where it's a little bit cheaper and ruin this whole place and this whole community.
So I'm gonna address your solar plant thing, because I was on the planning commission in twenty nineteen when those went through. So basically, we had a governor who wanted renewable energy. We also, when you look at it, we don't go out and seek land use applications, we don't have a, a sandwich board in the front of the courthouse that says, send us your land use applications. So what happens is a solar plant can, contacts a private property owner. On one of the solar places that we went to, and I went on a site visit, that was the way they were saving their property. Was because they did the solar thing, they figured in twenty-five years, when it was decommissioned, the children would still have a piece of property. That is a private property right and a private property concern. Which you have to place there, that that's an importance. In my book, that's important. I don't like solar farms, I've never liked them, but again, it's a private property issue, so that solar farm contacts that private property owner and makes a deal, and they come to us, and they meet the criteria. Now, yeah, we could say we don't like them, but there was no one out in the audience when we did our E S S E that even had a comment about them. So if we would have said, no, I don't like solar plants, it would have went to Luba, it would have went to a court of appeals, and we would have been, we would have lost, and it also sets a reputation of, you know, they're not being reasonable. So on the solar plant thing, now we have had, I have answered probably eighty-five individual no-solar emails. And I've explained this, now we do have something, cause when we do the E S S E, we have a social impact. And we have people coming forward and saying, we don't want any, so we do have something now to hang our hat on. But in twenty nineteen, and all of those went through in twenty nineteen, this was it, the state wanted renewable. this was it. The state wanted renewable energy. The private property owner made a deal and wanted renewable, you know, wanted to do this deal to save their ground. And we met the criteria. We put as tough a criteria as we could. Because, yeah, I knew there were pronghorn antelope migrating there. I knew there were elk migrating there. We couldn't get, we couldn't get an updated wildlife plan because ODF and W wouldn't cooperate. But that didn't mean that the people on the Planning Commission didn't know the reality. So we put the hardest criteria that we could put on there. But that was all we could do. So yes, I'm sorry that they're there. But they're there, and they're a fact of life, and you have to look at those components. And if you would have been sitting where I was sitting, you would understand your hands are tied behind your back. So that's the thing about the solar. And now we have more people, more people coming forward to comment. And we have more of, it's just a better way of doing business, because we do have all of you coming forward. And it gives us more tools in the toolbox to evaluate. I'm not talking about the city on their biomass. I'm talking about the county. So that's just an old ex-Planning commissioner point of view. Forgive us our decisions, but trust me, we did not make them lightly.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that that was-
I know. But I just want you to, I want you to think about it, and think about your private property rights. If they came to you right now, I can't sell my house, they gave you a hot-shot deal. Again, that's a private property right, and I would never want to touch those. So that's just my two cents back to you, Adam. Sorry. You got me on my one passionate thing.
Okay, because when I bring these things forward, it's like, I can't change the past, and nobody can change the past. I mean, that's-
No, no, no.
But I'm looking forward to the future to see what happens and how this place changes. And the things that I've seen, because I've lived in big cities, I've been around. I work for Bonneville. I know what's going on out there and all that. And then you see all these changes come in. Everybody thinks they need everything. They need more power. They need that. But they never ever actually come by and think about, do we actually have to have this stuff? No. How many data centers, if, data centers use so much power? That, yeah, we're gonna be short, but do we have to have a data center? And the Gestapo look at, looking over our shoulder all the time at all our information. They're gathering information on us. So when they come up and say things like that, it's like, let's ruin our community, because, because we have to have these data centers. Well, they caused a few jobs, but what else are they doing out there also? And how much power are they using up? And how much land are we using up? I say for Creek County, I say, if you guys got stipulations on it where 25 years, you're gonna, they're gonna go in and remove all this stuff?
We do.
More power to you.
And we have bonding for it.
Areas out there right now, they just leave, and everything's there underground.
No, they had to do a bond. It had to be a guaranteed and whatever. And I do agree with you, because look right here. We have holiday partnership. Creek County, we take care of ourselves. We're a generous community. We're a wonderful community. And I will try to preserve that the best that I can. But again, we have to work within our lawful edits that come down from above, unfortunately. So I hear you. I hear you, and a lot of other people are marrying your thoughts, and that's good.
And I'm hoping more people come forward and say that.
I hope they do. Or they can write me an email, and I will respond, because I have responded to all those emails. So there you go.
All right.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you very much.
I guess there's one good thing, too, about the solar company. They were at the 4H Fair, and they spent tens of thousands of dollars to the youth of this county. So they were supportive of our community.
And that is true. And I was sitting there, not by Brian, because we can't sit together, but I was close by. And Brian's very right. They were very supportive. And actually, the one solar company introduced me to their new community. I don't know, it's some fancy name. But what she wants to do is have a meeting with me and talk about ways that they can outreach into the community and help. And one of the things that I brought up was food insecurity, holiday partnership and that. So that is, Brian is very right. They are trying to make a positive presence in our county.
And I gotta make a comment. Of course, they're gonna do that, because they want something. They're gonna get something. They're gonna do it. So anyway, I gotta make that comment. I understand what you're saying, but nobody does anything for free. Let's put it that-
No, they don't.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to comment? Well, online, nobody? I think then that completes our meeting.
I make a, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Okay.
Motion made and second. All in favor, say aye.
Hermrich, aye.
Barney, aye.
Crawford, aye.
Thanks, Seth. Hope you get feeling better.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Bye.
Bye, Seth.